Tell us what I'm doing.
Action.
Okay, I call to order the December tenth, two thousand and eighteen, Latrobe City Council Meeting. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I would ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, to ask for guidance, or to just quietly relax.
Mr. Kelly.
Right.
Mr. Bartels.
Here.
Mr. Baldieri.
Here.
Mr. Corrigan.
There.
Mrs. Weller.
Here.
Mayor Wolford.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Latrobe City Council Meeting? Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Any questions or discussion? We're lost without Jacali. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the month of November two thousand and eighteen? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mrs. Weller. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have our citizens' request portion of the meeting for items that are related to the agenda. We'll have time later at the end of the meeting.
What did I skip? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Checked it off. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, special voting meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Baldieri. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weller. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do that every meeting. I skip something. Okay, now we'll go to the citizens' request board. It shouldn't have the agenda. Anyone have anything they want to discuss related to the agenda? And we'll have time at the end of the meeting for anything else on your mind. Yes, Mr. Miller.
James Miller, one twenty-seven East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I'm here in support of Ralph Janko. If, I understand that he's interested in becoming a council member. And I'm sure Ralph doesn't know how I was coming tonight, but he served us well on the zoning hearing board. He always had lots of questions, and I'm sure he will have lots of questions on council meetings. He's always come very prepared, and I hope that you will consider him for the position, for the vacant position. Also, I think it's great that you're going to install the stop sign at Tyler and Tacoma Avenue. I'm in support of that. That is an intersection that's, the cars go a little bit too fast, and it's hard to see, and I would hope that you would approve that also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else like to address council on items related to the agenda? Okay, moving on. Committee reports. Finance Committee, we're gonna talk about the budget tonight. Jim, did you have any else to add?
No, I've reviewed the budget, and I don't really have anything to add more than that.
Public Safety. Jim and Stoff, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing.
Okay. Public Works, Eric and Jerry?
There's nothing major to report. Mike will give his report later on, but just some things to be thinking about in the year ahead as we're looking at our transfer station. Mike and I talked about a goal coming up for the new year to look at some, the financial statement, you know, what we're spending on the transfer station, what we're bringing in, can we expand it, what kind, you know, long-term investment do we want to make in the transfer station as more equipment continues to age and the transfer station itself continues to be successful, we'll start considering that.
Thank you.
Where are we on the preparing the bids for our sanitation contract?
They're going out the nineteenth. The nineteenth is the good day.
Of this month.
Anything else on public works? Personnel Committee? I know John will probably have an update for us on police officers, but other than that, we've no personnel issues at this time. Nothing on the events?
Well, just to say that I think the Holly Jolly was a wonderful weekend, and also the bonfires. It just goes to show you, we have time and enough people showing up for every event, so I'm looking forward to the future and what we can do in the new year.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, and finally, here are our committee reports. We have our Greater Latrobe School District Student Showcase Committee, Eric Bartels, and we have our recipient of our two thousand and eighteen Student Recognition Award, and I'll let Eric do the presentation.
Yes, better late than never. We're glad to have you here, Adam. My name's Eric Bartels, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Maines to say a little bit about you for the public, but just to remind everyone, this is a twice-a-year award that the council likes to present to students at the Greater Latrobe School District in acknowledgement of their, not just their academic success, but their civic-mindedness, and what they do for the community, what they do to serve. We think that's something that we would like to encourage and continue to foster. And I know I'm speaking to the choir here because we're all up here doing the same thing, but we just wanted to present you with an award and encourage you to keep doing that as you move forward past high school. Mr. Maines?
I couldn't think of anybody better to receive this award when you asked for the nominations. We sent down a couple. Adam fit the mold perfectly. There's two things I always look for besides grades and above everything else when I'm talking to kids. Are they kind and are they smiling? Those are, to me, are two of the most important things I look for in students, and I can tell you Adam is smiling, and he is one of the most kindest kids that we have in our high school, and he's most deserving of the award. His resume is extensive, but I will highlight one thing that he has started recently for the school. It's a truly great thing that he's done. It's called the Avitem Club, and I'll let Adam talk a little bit more about this shortly. But since starting the Avitem Club, he had put on two assemblies, one for the ninth and tenth graders, one for the eleventh and twelfth graders, and he did such a great job doing that with his step up for Westmoreland County. The Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit asked he and part of the Avitem Club to come present to superintendents and other administrators and community people across the county last week. So, once again, you couldn't have chosen another candidate than Adam. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good. And I would like to hear about that.
Congratulations, Adam.
We all get a quick picture of Adam here? We're one of our guys.
I know that. Tell me something they don't know.
We want to hear a little bit about this, so let's get up here.
So, Avitem is a club that focuses on de-stigmatizing mental illness and then also bridging the gap between children who have these issues and the people that can give them help, that being a therapist. We do not train kids to be therapists. That is a very large misconception, but that is a very important station. We train people simply to be able, to be approachable, to be able to talk to people, and then decide, help them decide if they need to get their help.
What's the name of it again?
Avitem.
How do you spell that?
A-V-I-E-U-M. If you look it up, you'll see this Avitem effect video, and that will tell you everything. It'll sell you on it. It sold me on it. I saw the video, and boom, it's always. Last year, I had a friend, he came to me. We started this thing called Vodka Wellness. It's very similar to Avitem, however, we just created it ourselves. It wasn't a national thing. We then, after a few months, we were, Avitem was brought to us by our advisor, Dr. Sultans. She's since retired. And with that, we thought this was a great opportunity. It was a, it was kind of a little bit of a roadmap for us. It was something a beat of the lines, something that people knew about, and there was another ability to get grants, which is always helpful. But I think Avitem is a great part of what's happening at our school. Huge change, especially just with the new schedule that I made, which really likes to walk around. I mean, it's a large change in the way our school's functioning.
Are you a senior?
Does the word Avitem stand for something?
It does, sir. It's made up of Latin roots, and it means "I got your back."
Oh, cool. And are you a senior?
I am.
You are?
Yes, sir.
And would you introduce who's here with you?
I'm sorry, yes, this is my mother.
Hi, Mom.
It's entirely reflected on here.
What are your future plans, Adam?
So, I've applied to three schools, Duquesne, Virginia Military Institute, and Penn State. I've, they accepted me to Duquesne. This point, the other two are still waiting on. I plan to go for physics, and then Army ROTC.
Wow. Wow, congratulations, congratulations, and best of luck to you. You guys are welcome to stay, but we won't be offended if you don't want to.
I have a resting match to go to. Let's be honest, you should be there now.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
We'll be looking, we'll be looking forward to reading all about you. Thank you, Mr. Maines.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the match.
Thank you, sir. Be there.
There you go. Okay, Board and Authority Reports. Skip's not here, is he? Okay. Jerry, you got anything on parking rack?
Yeah, we had a good turnout for the Turkey Truck. Had about, we had five hundred and eighty-four runners and a hundred and fifty-three walkers. I'm not sure if that was more or less than last year, but it was, it's nice to see a lot of people coming as compared to another race that isn't very good. The fifteenth annual Comedy Night is on January twenty-sixth, sixth, at six o'clock at Huber Hall. It's thirty-five dollars, and you get your dinner and all the laughs you can.
Are there still tickets available, do you think?
I believe she's not.
It's a great event. I, it's just always on my son's birthday weekend, and I'm always at Columbus, but, okay, got anything on the library?
Um, Melody Report.
Okay.
Mike? Yes, one thing. I got an email, I think Wayne put out the email everywhere on council, that the Westmoreland County Engineers are having Armstrong drilling come in this week to do some key or technical drilling investigation on the brewery bridge. They're gonna have single lane closures, they're gonna have flaggers present, so it might have some traffic delays up there at the brewery bridge, but that's part of their investigation for the replacement of that bridge, one twenty.
Only another bridge.
Couple of weeks, they say, for this investigation, so they're gonna consult with the hospital business at brewery, just make sure that they're not gonna be impacted. And we still have, really not closure, but it is more of a day, flaggers here, what we have, that are still going to work with the utility placement for that job, first project, giving them a first project for next year, so, all right, that's about all I have to roll.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Chief Lisbon?
Just a couple of things, Madam Mayor. Mike, Officer Wigan and Officer Kessler have been appointed both as detectives for the Saturday, we began the testing procedure for the officer, the physical agility test, which will come Saturday. Next Saturday will be the rigging, ma'am. So, shortly after that, we'll have a list to start looking at, interviewing. I believe that's all I have, ma'am.
Your thing tomorrow.
Oh, the, the, there's an event here tomorrow for any ladies who wish to come, it's free of charge. Damsel in Defense, it's called. There'll be several defensive tactics instructors here, the females, about awareness and how to protect yourself in certain events. If you would like to sign up, I believe you do it online, or you can call City Hall and ask to speak with that, or I believe you can just show up, actually. There'll be some products here to purchase if you'd like. And that's at six o'clock tomorrow evening, right here.
Council Chambers. Okay, thank you. Chief Brazili?
I don't have very much today, other than we got through Turkey Truck, Bonfire, and the Holy Jolly Christmas without any real incidents, so that's a good thing, and it seems like you're everything wrong for here, so, until next year.
Thank you. Ann?
I don't have a report, but I just wanted to tell Councilman Forge that I think last month he asked, tried to put something in the newspaper. It felt like winter safety.
Yeah.
I think that was in last week, so like, I love being, you know, winter safety.
Just to remind.
Winter safety measures.
Yeah.
And we did that?
Okay, go ahead. I'm also putting things on the website. Probably a good idea to do that, too. Anything that goes in the paper should go on the website. I think we absolutely do that. Especially that kind of stuff and the events, because I looked, and there was only one thing on there, and I think maybe just by putting everything that we put in the paper, everything that's announced on the website, too. I know it's a lot of work. No, it's fine, you know, where it's located, and then, you know, there's.
I mean, I would assume we have an events calendar on there, so.
Yeah, and I update that whenever.
You know, she, I'm sorry.
You can get my name out, my email, I have people on it, on there, city event.
Yeah, I think that we, I think that's a great idea.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I asked you, were we able to try to update the sanitation collection and the special collections? Like leaves and?
Yeah, I think we were waiting, I had a way to speak about it, we're waiting for the, the new year to start, you know.
Yeah, it's too late for this year, and we're also waiting, we did get approval for the grants for the equipment, we just wanna be defined on that.
Okay, it can go off as soon as it's in the schedule.
Yeah, I mean, next year, next year, the process will be down different. Well, I agree with you there. I think any, anytime we send something out in the paper or we want to alert the public, automatically.
Yeah, 'cause more people look at the website than, than unfortunately, you know, read papers anymore. I mean, I read my paper on the website, on, usually online. I get a hard copy, but I also read it online.
We probably should have a process, I thought it's gonna work, as far as making sure that the right people get it. Why are people looking to get it if it's still on the website? And then people aren't even at the contact form, and people catch it, and that's not helping.
Well, that's good. Chief?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I forgot one thing. A while back, significant amount of money was turned into the police department. We've been desperately trying to find out who it belongs to. So, if anybody knows of anybody who lost a significant amount of money, they should come down to the station, if they've been properly identified, how much it was, where it was located, and how it was found, we'd be happy to find you out.
And it was put in the paper.
Okay.
It was, uh, I don't know. It's a poor record.
Anything else before we move on? Okay, Administration of Finance, Zach.
All right, the first item on the agenda is a motion item. It's a motion to appoint whomever is chosen as a member of the City of Latrobe Council term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, to fill the vacant position due to the resignation of Mr. Jack Murtha. I would like to note for council that this person would be appointed this evening but couldn't assume the chair until the oath of office was administered by a proper official, which could occur at the agenda session or the next scheduled meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Ralph Janko as a member of the City of Latrobe Council, as outlined by the solicitor.
Okay, I have a motion. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Everybody will second it. Pick one. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Janko, we welcome you to Latrobe City Council. We'll, we'll. We really appreciate your interest in serving, and, you know, as we all recognize, you've been an interested member of the community for a long time, so it's an honor and privilege to have you serve on the council with us. We'll talk, probably try to get someone in here to swear you in, if not, at the December twenty-sixth meeting. That's when our next meeting, that's when our agenda prep is, on the twenty-sixth, day after Christmas. It might be hard, but if not, we'll definitely do it at the January meeting, but we'll talk about that, okay? Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is entitled approving the two thousand and nineteen tax ordinance. This is an ordinance fixing the tax rate for the general city purposes and other purposes for fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and nineteen, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen. The total mills assessed would be twenty-one point five.
Same as this year, no tax increase. May I have a motion to approve the two thousand and nineteenth tax ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Forge. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
The next item is ordinance, adoption of budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. This is a balanced budget for fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, with total receipts and expenditures equaling five million, seven hundred, seven hundred forty thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
So I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forge. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Baldieri. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Polly. Sorry, Polly.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution. The resolution is entitled approving the conservation partnership agreement with the Westmoreland County Conservation District. This is an agreement with the County Conservation District to address stormwater management and a variety of other areas concerning the same.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions or discussion? This is something we do every year, correct?
Every year, or? Well, it's especially every five years.
Every five years? Every five years?
This agreement we've had for the last five years, and we'll go forward since then.
Okay. Polly?
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution item. The resolution is entitled approving agreement with Westmoreland County Transit Authority. This is a, an agreement to participate in the transit authorities program for the fiscal period ending June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. The cost for participation is one thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This was the same amount that was assessed last year, and this is an annual agreement that we routinely engage in.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Baldieri. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weller. Any questions? Polly?
I have a question.
Oh, wait, wait.
Do we get statements from the transit authority to let us know how many of our residents are being picked up, and like, just what our engagement is with it?
No, we can, we would have to be asked for, but we could probably get the monthly report, you know, how many of your residents are being picked up. I don't necessarily need. I can ask them, and I'm sure they have, and the block, we've never asked.
They track the riders. I, I serve on the board for the transit authority, so they, they track all the routes, so we can get that information.
I'll look.
Hey, Helen. Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Since I serve on the board, I'm gonna have to stay.
The next item on the agenda is a motion item. It's a motion to approve the meeting dates for calendar year two thousand and nineteen, and authorizing the solicitor to advertise the notice of the same. The meeting dates are as they traditionally have been, second, fourth Mondays, with adjustments made for holidays.
Did you say this is a resolution?
This is a motion.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the calendar for two thousand and nineteen?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is a motion item. The motion is entitled, or is a motion as follows, motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare an ordinance amending City of Latrobe Code, Chapter three-one-three, regarding storm and surface water flow.
May I have a motion, please, to authorize the solicitor to prepare the ordinance as the outline?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Baldieri. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions?
I would just like to comment, we're not imposing any new standards, it's just there are things that, older provisions of the code that conflict with newer version, newer portions of the code, so it's just making you uniform.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Police Department. This item is a motion. The motion is as follows, motion to authorize free on-street parking from December fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, through December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
May I have a motion to authorize free parking from December fifteen through December thirty-first?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Baldieri. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, that's what, one, two, three, four, five, five to one. Go ahead, Zach.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution. The resolution is entitled approving the agreement with X-32 Temple Canine Training LLC for police canine maintenance training services for the City of Latrobe Police Department. The agreement essentially just provides the, you know, routine training for the officer and canine.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor? The resolution is outlined by the solicitor.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weller. If you remember, I think John explained this to us at the agenda prep session. Any questions? All in favor? I'm sorry, Paulie?
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller? Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
The last action item on the agenda is a resolution. It's entitled Amending City of Latrobe Code, Chapter 256, Vehicle and Traffic. This ordinance would add a two-way stop condition on Tyler Street with its intersection with East Tacoma Avenue.
May I have a motion to adopt? The resolution is outlined by the solicitor. Wait, we need a motion and a second before you can ask a question.
You can, in fact, the motion is, you commented that it was a resolution and then later an ordinance, which is, is the resolution passing or not?
I'm sorry, the title was wrong. It is an ordinance that was advertised.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So, may I have a motion to adopt? The ordinance is outlined by the solicitor. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Baldieri. Any questions?
I would just like to put on the record it was recommended pursuant to a study.
Okay, thank you. Paulie?
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Okay, that's it for the agenda items. Thank you. We got through this pretty quickly. Thank you, Zach and Paulie and Wayne. So, nothing else? Did you want, did you want the floor?
I just can't really get in trouble for that stop sign. I don't really do it.
Oh, do you?
I wouldn't want to get green.
Okay, unfinished business. You guys want to talk about, I want to talk about the lights. And I know Jim and Eric, you guys...
Well, let me ask something real quick. This is, because the lights will probably take longer. She's, last week, or last month, we were approached by a resident asking about a streetlight on Avenue D. Did you have a chance to look into that or did we follow up on that?
Mike and I discussed that. Go ahead, Mike. Oh. Yeah, well, I went down, I spoke with, I can't recall who, who was the owner. Yeah, I spoke with him, went down and located the light pole, got the number of the pole and Wayne was able to, I think, talk to Terry from Westmoreland Power about that. It's something that can be done. We can add that at additional cost for the light. I think what we're going to do first is just see if there is sufficient lighting on that street right now, if I recall.
Yeah, I talked to Terry, the price for it. If we're going to look and see if the light looks like it's indicative, meaning if it is, it's a $300 item. So it's not that expensive.
A one-time $300 item?
Well, we pay for the light, rest of it.
Yeah, I know.
For perpetuity, but yeah.
But not $300.
Yeah, because there's a transformer on it and because of where the pole is located, it's relatively inexpensive. I didn't know if the lighting dictated, if it does, we can certainly do it.
Well, yeah, I just like to know the need. I don't want to be in the habit of putting lights all over the place.
Right, even if it's $300, it's off there.
Do we check it at night to see what's light? Can we?
We can, Madam Mayor. I did not check it at night, so I didn't have anybody looking at it either.
Can you, your guys, take a look at it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up again. Okay. Anything else before we get to the lights? Okay, Jim, Eric, who wants to take that?
Madam Mayor, I don't know the exact date, but it was probably a little over a week ago. We had a meeting in the green room in attendance for Mr. Jones, Mr. Bartels, myself, Mr. Tronzo, and Tim Schulteis from Schulteis Electric. And I cannot think of the name yet, one of them.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah, Robert. So anyhow, we spent a good hour, an hour and a half talking about different issues. What came out of that meeting, and basically it was centered around safety. What came out of the meeting was as follows. As you recall, it was brought to our attention that there was an older pole, aluminum pole, that sparked and caused some material on the outside to burn. This happened because some other entity, like Kent, which it is, was working in the streets, jiggled the line, it moved about two inches across, it sparked. Well, that pole is gone. That issue is resolved. That pole will not spark again. The second thing that we discussed were the covers. They're down at the base of the pole. Some of our older poles have covers on them and some do not. So I believe, Ann, if I'm not wrong, you made the inspection or planned to make one?
Yes, I think we found six of them and Kelly works, prepared them all.
Okay, so Ann inspected the various lights in what phases? One, two, three, or where did you expect them?
All downtown.
Downtown.
All, you inspected all the poles downtown?
The older poles, yeah.
Yeah.
The older ones. And so those that did not have covers at the base now have covers upon them. The third thing we discussed was the fact that when Phase 1, which is mainly Main Street, Polygynier Street, Depot Street, when Phase 1 is completed, every pole, whether it is a brand-new pole or whether it is one of the older ones still remaining for various reasons, every pole will be circuit breaker. So that if that instance should happen again where wire would touch the pole, it will snap the breaker right away and you might get a tingle, but that would be about it. So that will, at the completion of Phase 1, all poles, old and new, will be metered and circuit break.
In the whole downtown?
In the downtown, in Phase 1. In Phase 1, the ones...
Oh, just in Phase 1 that we have?
Just in Phase 1. That's what we're responsible for at the moment.
Right.
Now, Phase 2, the poles are still owned.
Wait, 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 I have a question.
Yeah.
Once we're done with Phase 1, there won't be any more silver poles, will there?
Phase 2?
No, I know, but Phase 1 poles will be the new poles?
Well, I'm not sure there are a couple places where there may after remain.
Oh, because until we get to 2020, okay.
Yeah, there'd be some that are still covered.
Because of the 2020, those ones will be taken out in 2020?
Well, I mean, because of funding too, I think, I believe. But I mean, you're talking out of 57 poles, you know, talking another remaining of about eight that are still not to be completed yet. In Phase 1. In Phase 1.
Okay.
But yet all the poles, including the eight, will be on the meter and will be circuit breaker.
Okay.
So they will be set.
Okay.
Now, the only ones left are the ones outside of Phase 1, and that's Phase 2 and 3.
And how many lights is that?
I'm going to say probably about 20 lights. I talked to Tim Schulteis, and I haven't had a chance to tell you all. I got, he got back to me with the pole numbers and the amount of meters we would need, which is four or five meters, depending on how you do it.
Is it multiple poles on a meter?
Yeah. Yeah, you could have, as long as the string of lights, one meter works and one circuit breaker works. But it's just a matter of talking to Westmoreland Power about using their poles and putting our meter and a circuit breaker on.
So do you have a meeting scheduled Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday, we're going to sit down. I'm going to preliminarily present what we've talked about and then I'll give back to you. I've given, I sent the information over to them. They now have the exact pole numbers. And once I get some information feedback, then I'll give back to you all.
Jim, I mean, maybe is it possible for somebody from council or who's all going to be at the meeting?
What time is it? Uh, it's like 10 o'clock.
Where at?
I don't know. It's at, well, in a rare case, it's actually buying me lunch. It must be 11 o'clock. Over at the, what's it?
Joey's?
Joey's, thank you. I don't know. Do you want to? I don't know. Believe me, I worked for the company for seven years. They never bought me lunch. So...
You worked for Westmoreland?
Yeah, I worked for seven years. But yeah, Jim, if you'd, Jim or Eric, if you'd like to go?
I would be.
I'll be.
It's going to be Terry, Dawn, Jim Piper, and then I tried, I asked the board, Tim, to see if they could come.
I'll check one.
Here, my time.
Yeah, okay, that would be great. Okay.
The next meeting by the agenda meeting, we should have a better idea what our options are.
Okay. That's, that's part of it. We still have to figure out, because if we're going to do Phase 2 and 3, we've got to bury the lines. So we know how many lines that there are that are above ground. And how do we go about getting, you know, a plan together to, you know, what I'd like to know is, you know, if we have five lines above ground and it's going to cost $10,000 a line, that's $50,000. So let's budget $10,000 in the next five years or something like that. I'd like to understand, you know, what we're talking about here.
I think the problem is we're talking a little more narrowly.
I know we aren't. I know that. That's Phase 1.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we can get some resolutions at Phase 2 that we're, that modify our poles and we can still provide some greater safety. Yeah, we've got to make sure that Westmoreland Power is on board with us taking over their poles. And to that point then, we can talk to Schulteis or whoever.
Right.
To get an estimate on the cost of burying those remaining lines.
And that was determined earlier.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess the point is whether or not we take over their poles, those lines above ground, while they may be their responsibility, burying them is our responsibility.
And once we take the poles over, the wires over, they're our responsibility.
The poles are.
The poles and the wires.
Right, but the wiring is our responsibility now.
Yeah, technically, right.
I mean, all right, so we just, we'll figure, we'll figure, make sure everything, see what we need to do on the safety app, like that one first, and then we can talk to Schulteis.
Yeah, I'm sure Schulteis will give us a bit on what are the costs to bury the lines. I just want to make sure we have the ability to do that. In other words, they give us...
You mean the financial ability?
No, I'm talking about the, because it's their assets.
Oh, I understand that, yeah. Yeah, but I guess what confuses me about that is they're their asset, but if you look at the contract for when we buried the lines, the contract with the parent company says that once we put the lines underground, the lines, the repair of the lines underground were our responsibility, even though the poles remained there, so...
Yeah, the poles were theirs and also did the maintenance on the lights. They maintained the lights.
Right, right, but when the, when the lines underground failed, you know, if we wanted to bury them, it would have been our responsibility, but since we didn't, they quit them off. So it's still, I still think we need to figure that out, but I agree, first things first is the safety app.
And in the process of doing the Phase 1, they found some areas where they thought the lines underground were broken, only to find out they're broken to base, which is a lot cheaper. So I mean, you know, they're really not sure where it's broken.
Right. How would you know until you get in there? Okay.
So we want to tackle the safety issue, get that issue out of the way. Then I understand where the funding...
I mean, I just don't want to end up, you know, 25 years from now being on both ground utility downtown. And that's what happens. Because you know, you know, the other thing is, you know, those lines underground have to be, you know, getting red, getting, they're what, 60 years old?
Forty.
Forty years old? Okay, thank you guys for that. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. So the other thing I wanted to talk about was, we had some discussions about this is 2020 when they committed to do that. I was in a meeting before you guys, and one of the things we talked about is when, when Pet Dog comes in here and opens up the streets to do crosswalks, might we have multicoal money to do additional paving to the streets? And we want LMA to, while the ground's opened up, to replace whatever lines are old and bad and all that kind of stuff. What I'm hearing is that they're only going to do patchwork or replace a couple things. And my fear is that we're going to get all this work done and then we're going to have a major water line due because the pipes are so old. So I've asked Wayne sometime after the first of the year to schedule a meeting with LMA. And I think we need to have a meeting with LMA before we meet with Pet Dog. Do you have a meeting scheduled with Pet Dog yet?
No, they just said January, February.
Yeah, I'd like to meet with LMA first. Hey, what do you guys think?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and I mean, Jack Mirth and I went to them, what, a year and a half ago? Maybe longer now, with the map of the project and said, you know, we're giving you well enough advanced time to, to put together a plan and find the funding to take care of this the right way so that we're not...
And we have a request then where they asked to see if there might be a joint funding request, a joint grant request, and we might be able to pursue?
We have not. I don't, mine aren't. But that's a good idea.
Point of discussion.
Well, I'd like to know, you know, I mean, I'd like to know how old are, you know, first of all, let's, you know, we have the, we know which roads we're doing from point A to point B. How old are those lines? How many times have they broken down and, you know, they've, they've been repaired? You know, what's the status and the age of those lines? And then, you know, what's it going to cost to fix them? And then, then if they don't have the money, maybe we can't go out originally.
If they can contribute some portion, we can contribute some portion. That might be a lot easier to do. If one is...
Other municipalities, I've seen other municipalities give them for infrastructure, stuff like that. I mean, we have, we need to start doing this now. This 2020 will be here before we go in. So we're to come on that. What else? Okay. Any new business? Okay, Christine?
Well, sort of new, but sort of old. We started that welcome home conversation, and I'm wondering in the new year, Wayne, if we're going to continue that? I know that, you know, you're busy with meetings right now and everyone else is sort of crazy at the holidays, but I think I don't want to lose track of it. So we were meeting...
Welcome wagon.
Welcome wagon, okay.
Yeah, we can. I mean, you're right, it's been, it's been a little crazy the last few weeks. But, and it's going to be crazy for the next few weeks. But certainly, we can, I don't want to forget that it is a good project.
Maybe in January we can get with everyone and I'll get with Holly to make sure that we have the date on the calendar.
Have a little date. Perhaps we can gather some material so that we go to the meeting, we have some things to do with.
And then the other thing is, I have been seeing some signs around town and they were very positive, very positive signs. They were all along the path, all through town, and then all of a sudden, they disappeared. And this weekend, I was with someone who I found out is the mysterious sign placer. And he and a group of his friends are financing this, and they were doing it to spread positive words, to spread faith throughout the community. So I'm wondering, what are the rules of the city in placing signs? And how can we make sure that if they place those signs, they get to stay for a period of time and they're not just taken away by random folk? I mean, I know people sometimes may, you know, take things and we can't control that, but do we have rules as to how we put things up? Or how can we help these people to do things in the right way?
I think we have to be careful about that because what you...
If you're on a right-of-way, you also have to say okay. But you can place a sign in private person's yard if they are...
So what about along the path, the Lincoln Road path?
No, that's private property.
No, they were already taken over there.
Yes, I know.
They've been removed before.
The problem, yeah, so how close to the road is our property, though?
We have right-of-way on every road. Look at that right away on every road, it depends, that's why I always tell people, come in here, come, come and ask the council if you wanna do that.
So it should be brought before council, and then approved, and then we determine where the signs can be placed?
You gotta be really careful about that, because.
They're all money, and, yeah.
Because, I don't know how to say this.
And before you say anything, Rosie, know that this is me coming to.
No, 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 I understand.
Like, they have not said anything about it, other than, you know, we had a conversation.
What I'm saying is, we have to be careful, I, I was on another board one time, where people wanted to do advertising on something, and, you know, you have to be very careful about that, because if I say yes to your organization, because I believe, believe in what your organization's doing, and another organization comes and has the absolute opposite thing that I don't approve of, I can't say no to them.
Right.
And yes to you, you know, so, I mean.
From what I understand, these signs are religious in nature, and we're gonna run into another topic called separation of church and state. Now, you can put them on private property.
Right.
But if they're located within the public right of way, that could create a problem.
I thought it was more just optimistic, I thought it was optimistic phrases, I don't know that it was all necessarily centered towards one faith, all of them, I thought it was just sort of positive comments and uplifting verses.
I mean, we do have sign restrictions, and the signs would have to comply with whatever, you know, the restrictions are in that place, whether it's in the right of way, his own district, what the sign says, you know, we do have sign restrictions.
Yeah, and as far as the sign, as far as, you know, council being aware of it, as long as a person follows the restrictions that we have on our ordinances, you know, they can do that. But you're right, I mean, you know, and if you have councils starting approving certain types of signs, it could be a problem.
Yeah, and our sign approval process, I believe, is administrative through hand, it's, it's not something that would come to council's attention.
No, they're, yes, it does come to council, it's on right away, public area, I deal with private, they deal with public, well, they always have, yeah, I don't wanna make those decisions.
While we're talking about this, you know, it's a good time to also let everyone know that, you know, not to place any type of sign advertisement on, fix it on a telephone pole, that's an ordinance, ain't not allowed to do, and a lot of times, you know, people put their for sale signs up, and all kind of different advertisements, you know, for ourselves, you know, that's the ordinance restricting, you know, fixing anything to a telephone pole, like, you know, here in the city.
We, we had talked about cleaning up the signs that are posted, like, I know one over on Lloyd Avenue, it says, Mr. Bee's. It says, Mr. Bee's.
Okay.
Up there, and all those kinda signs.
Directional signs to businesses that no longer exist, or, or have a new name?
I just thought we were under the impression that we were gonna, I think that was Ben Jones.
Okay, you're always unaware of that?
Well, I think he, he was counting, we had like, I don't know, some gazillion number of signs posted everywhere, I know you've been working on trying to.
Yeah, we've, we've been starting from the downtown, but, you know, at the same time, it's like, like, projects going on, reducing a lot of the unnecessary signings to clean it up and everything, I can also, you know, extend that, you know, to, you know, throughout the town, you know, start doing that, you know, definitely have to check and make sure that signs are, you know, still being used, but you're right, Mr. Bee's and all that sort of thing.
And I know that, that our Christmas ornaments don't fit the new light poles, so have we looked, and I know we're not gonna get new ones now, but are we looking at?
Oh, there's some beautiful ones.
I know, I was in Erie last week, and they had some really, they had some light poles like ours, and they had these really nice, give the view of light. Yes, and the ones you sent were beautiful with the rays on it, so, you know, we'll look at that.
There's some pretty, very pretty choices, though.
And then.
To your point, before, as far as the Mr. Bee's sign, the best thing is to let us know, because, you know, even though people are around through town, that may not be looking to see what sign should be removed.
Well, it was spoken before about going around and cleaning them up.
Well, and they do, they have, no, I mean, as you see signs, that, you see they're definitely don't belong, let us know, yeah, they have removed, I mean, for a while there, we had no skateboarding on the sidewalks, I mean, it was like, if you, I know it's ornaments, but you're, you don't have quite as many on each block, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, any other citizens' comments related to anything, anybody wanna talk about anything, if you mind?
Jay Miller, 1207 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. Regarding the signs, I think until council makes some ordinances possibly regarding fines for people putting up signs, people are gonna continue to do that, and until the, we actually start fining people, they're, they're gonna continue. Also, the second item I have is, since Ralph has been being accepted for city council, we now have a, another vacancy on the zoning hearing board, and at the present time, we're supposed to have five plus one alternative member. We now have only three members on the board, and you have to have a quorum to even hold a meeting, and I think a quorum is three on the zoning hearing board. So if one person can't show up, and you have a zoning hearing board meeting, and somebody wants to put a, let's just say, an adult bookstore, they're gonna get a variance to approve an adult bookstore someplace. I think the citizens should know that we need some volunteers to be on the zoning hearing board, so that things like this cannot happen. So if anybody's interested, I would appreciate something being put in the paper, anybody's interested, I think we need a couple of members on the zoning hearing board. I, I believe that once you're on city council, you cannot be on the zoning hearing board, if that's correct. So Ralph would have to resign.
Do we have any other boards, Holly, that are unfilled that you know of, or that we have vacancies on? It might not be a bad idea after, if there's one other one, after the first of the year to run another little blurb just about that.
Yeah, I think we just put an ad in recently for, I'm forgetting, I'm trying to think where it was.
Be civil service?
Civil service was one, yeah.
Yeah.
There was another one, yeah.
And we're both on the website, and we're both have to, one at a time, we'll put something up here.
I would just comment to people in the audience, if you know anybody, you can gently twist their arm a little, please feel free to do so, sometimes if you go after somebody and say, we really need you, they'll, they'll step up and volunteer.
Yeah, I think it helps if you, Jim, or Mr. Janko, to talk to some people and tell them, it's, it's not a huge time commitment.
I have talked to some people, but.
Can't give, yeah, well, we'll keep trying.
I, I keep trying, believe you.
Okay, anyone else?
Chief, how's the traffic situation at the new LES?
Day one?
After a week?
Well, completely honest, day one was a little hectic, obviously. Majority of the problem was, was parent drop off, or I'm sure which way to go in. Day two and three, smoothed out, by the end of the week, it was all figured out. This morning was probably the best day. We started out, on day one, it took twenty-eight minutes to get everyone in, we have it down to sixteen minutes now, so.
Wow.
It's doing well, it's doing well, with, with, while they have some extra help, their staff is helping out as well, we have four fire police out helping, and we usually have these two officers there, if we're not on our call or busy, we have, we've had two there every morning, sometimes three. Now, you know, took, took, took the lead on that, he's doing a great job, he, he worked out the plan with the fire police and school, and it's working soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we're talking about this, the issue with the lockbox. One of the members of us.
Chief, presumably brought that up?
The Knox blocks?
Knox blocks.
Knox blocks on the school, the actual facility, is key to ours, it's, it's, it's key to the city of Latrobe, the problem is the administration, though.
Oh.
That's across the way, that one, and I, I had talked to Kurt about that, that's gonna have to get changed, I said, listen, you have keys, I said, I have one key, I said, I can't get those keys, because that has to go through the municipality or township that's, you know, that it's registered to. Anytime we put an Knox box in town, anywhere, I have the forms down in my office, I have to sign them, and they, at what box, they, what particular box they went on their, their facility or their building, and, and they go to there, and if I need extra keys for our stuff, I have to put it on the department letter and send in additional keys, I can't do that with Uni. So my suggestion to them was, and I don't know if they'll do it or not, they have off the old building, the, the old elementary school is to take one of those boxes or not, if not, it may be the new owners of that building want them on, and that's fine, but one way or the other, I talked to Kurt Pompis, and I told him, one or two things has to happen, you remove those from that location to the current, or we're gonna get a new Knox box. Because I, Pete Kenner Roach, somehow that happened, and, and I kinda understand how it happened, at one time, the point of fact was, they were going to move the administration up to senior high location, and that didn't happen, and it moved from the old secondary school down there to its current location. So when that was in transition, they kinda jumped the gun, that's what happened.
John, are there many instances like that, where outside the municipality?
That's, I, I, only one I knew of.
So is, is a Knox box defined as something that if there's an emergency, then you can just get into it?
The Knox box defined as a security box, and what is it, is, is it's the business owner, the establishment, resident, whoever has it, you can get them on your phones. What that is, is there's only keys, the only people, the only agencies that have those keys are fire, police, and EMS, they're the only people that can get into those Knox boxes. Those keys in those Knox boxes either belong to the resident, or the establishment, or, you know, whatever building they're located on. So, basically, I would, and I said this once before, I think first of the year, we should probably revisit at least getting the ordinance for all the, all the commercial buildings to, to have a Knox box, it makes it so much easier on fire, police, and EMS, because if we don't have keys, number one, the police are being summoned to gain entrance, well, and they're calling us to bring our tools out, and we're destroying doors, I don't know that you know, but both the high rises over here, all three of them knew us, they all had them, I had convinced the housing authority to put them on their buildings, and what was happening was, at one point in time, we were breaking doors in, not so much us, but the police would go in, somebody's in need of help, they'd break it down, or wouldn't break it down, whichever it took, so we'd get in, well, I would sell a bill for $900 to repair that door. I said, well, good luck with that, and then, the police was selling a bill, and they pretty much told them the same thing, in like, you know, we were summoned for somebody in distress, so we're gonna get in the way we have to.
Right.
So now what they do, is if there's a lockout, it's a shame, they charge the resident $50, the maintenance guy come in, open their door, open their door, we don't have keys to the individual units, you know, we can get in the main doors, but we cannot get into the apartments, because they will not issue a master and put it in the Knox box.
John, with regard to the commercial partners, not the legal, what would you, percentage would you say have voluntarily placed their key in the Knox box?
There's not very many, probably about twenty percent.
And just out of curiosity, what's the basic cost for them to do that?
$300 a box, quick key.
How much?
$300 for the Knox box. One time.
Okay. I mean, I was thinking like you said about passing the ordinance to say, you must, if you are maintained within the.
Well, Mr. Kelly and, and council, I carry a bag of keys in my truck, and I'm gonna dump them on my seat, I have them all tagged, and I gotta search for the key, if there's a Knox box, alls I had to do was pull one key out, open their Knox box, pull their keys out, and I'd get these back. The community college did it voluntarily, and like I said, the building's not here, the high rise, but now they charge the resident $1,200 if they break the door, the resident lets it. So a lot of people have done it, a lot of people, because they're optimistic, they want, and I think it's a small price to pay, as far as about a $300 item.
One time.
One time.
But why couldn't you have one Knox box, say at the fire station, or two, and then, okay, there's a fire, I'm running down, opening up, get the key out, now you don't have $300 per person for their own individual Knox box?
It's still the same thing, I, what if I don't have somebody to?
Well, no, 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 what I'm trying to say is, we required people to do it, and we didn't have that $300 cost, you give us a key, that's the cost of your participation, we'll put it into our Knox.
I can't give anybody a key, other than fire, EMS, or police.
Well, you.
I can't give, if the resident don't get a key.
No, 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 no. I, I would, you have a Knox box at this station, big box, I give you a key to my house, okay, now, you have your key to get in, my key is there to get into my house, why is it all this everybody?
It's gonna take time, because as many keys to the buildings, I still gotta go through those keys on a hanger, if they have their own box, their keys are already in that box, I take the key that's on the truck, I get into their house, and they're, open the box up.
Okay, but we're not gonna solve this here, well, let's, let's move this to an agenda session meeting.
I would love to, Mr. Bartel, though, that the LES gave all of that off to a key card, we can get into any door, an LES, go have to pay for it. Thank you.
City managers' report?
None.
The only thing I have is, I just wanna remind everyone that Saturday is the community open house at LES, it starts, I believe, at two o'clock, I encourage everybody to stop down there, it's a fantastic building, I'm really, really excited, love it, so, that's all I have, and I'll just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, we'll see you before the new year, but any other questions or concerns, if not, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?